Take a seat and those of you who are checking in, if you could do so quietly, that would be a help. Congratulations, we have a quorum. At least 100 people are present, so Sherburne Special Town Meeting of October 15th, 2014, will now come to order. The town clerk, Carol Marple, has assured me that the warrant was properly posted by the town constables and that the tellers for tonight’s meeting have already been sworn in. A couple of housekeeping things to tell you. First of all, if you leave this room for any reason, you must leave your ballot. The tellers have not been sworn in?
Uh, no.
The tellers are now going to be sworn in.
Everybody else has been sworn in.
While they’re being sworn in, I’ll review some of the housekeeping items. If you have to leave this room for any reason, leave through these two doors and don’t forget that you must leave your paper ballot with the checkers when you leave the room and then when you come back in, you may reclaim your ballot. Please put your cellphones on courtesy mode and if you need to take a call, please step out of the room to take the call. I’d like to remind you to stay out of the aisle and also not to obstruct the exits. And also, non-voters are always welcome at our meetings. The non-voting officials are seated in our front row and if you are a non-voting visitor, it’s in, to my left, in the back. I think you guys are sitting on blue chairs, are you not? I’d also like to introduce the people on the stage. To my left is the advisory committee. Closest to me is Chairperson Mary Wolfe and Vice Chair Ben Williams. After that, we have Barb Kantorsky, Vicki Relis, Jeff Rudin, Lanny Rubin, George Marl, and Jeff Waldron. To my right, immediately next to me, is Town Council Barbara San Andre and Town Clerk Carol Marple. And on the floor, in front of the stage, are the selectmen. We have Paul Dorensis, Chairperson Mike Giemo, Town Administrator David Williams, and the Assistant Town Administrator Diane Moore. I’ve heard some questions since our annual town meeting last April about town meeting procedures and mostly the questions could have been answered by reading the moderator’s remarks in your advisory report or by listening to the introductory remarks I make at every town meeting. I know that these remarks are about as exciting as listening to a flight attendants’ safety lecture, but if you don’t pay attention and learn that the closest exit might be in the rear, you could get tripped up in an emergency. So here goes with the procedures. Parliamentary procedures are the rules of the road and they allow groups of people to conduct meetings in a fair, orderly, and predictable way. They protect the rights of the minority to be heard and at the same time, they allow the majority to move ahead and complete the group’s business. They protect us from having a train wreck. The procedures of town meeting are different from what you may know from a fraternal organization or a club because the town meeting is a deliberative legislative body that must complete its agenda. Our Sherburne Town Meeting procedures reflect state law, local bylaws, best practices of the Massachusetts Moderators Association, and local tradition. So here’s a quick summary. The agenda for tonight’s meeting is called “The Warrant.” A copy was mailed to every household and if you forgot your copy, extras are available at the check-in tables. A motion must be made to put an agenda item before the meeting. I will recognize a member of the advisory committee to make the initiating main motions. To speak on a motion, you must ask the moderator to be recognized. To save time, I ask that you already be standing at one of the two microphones, they’re right here in the center aisle, before asking to be recognized. Once recognized by me, please state your name and your address first and then make your comments. Your comments must be relevant to the motion. Their traditional phrase is that they must be within the four corners of the motion and limited to two minutes. I will not recognize a speaker a second time unless everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to do so. If you do receive recognition to make an additional comment, it must contain new information. My objective, as always, is to move the proceedings along as fairly and as efficiently as possible as my predecessor wisely counselled. Once something’s been said, everyone else doesn’t have to repeat it. Let’s complete our business before we’re all frazzled. Because thorough presentations can actually shorten total debate by answering potential questions before they’re even asked, I will allow up to five minutes for presenters who have filed a presentation request form with me. A timekeeper is sitting in the front row who will raise a red card when your allotted time to speak or present is up. I intend to be consistent and firm in observing these limits. I hope you will understand if I interrupt when your time is up. Better yet, see the red card and stop yourself. And all alternate main motions and amendments to a main motion must be submitted in writing to the town clerk. She has forms for that purpose if you anticipate doing that. No more than two amendments can be on the floor at the same time and a vote is first taken on the amendments and then on the main motion. Sometimes the main motion made by advisory is a negative motion and that is a motion to take no action. A negative motion must be defeated before an affirmative action can be put before the town meeting. I’ll offer a fuller explanation of that when the situation arises. Our normal procedure is to use a voice vote on all motions. We will have a count of hands by the tellers if the vote is not clear to me or if seven voters question the vote immediately after it is declared. On motions requiring a two-thirds majority, we will try for a unanimous voice vote. If the voice vote is not unanimous but is clearly two-thirds, under Sherburne’s bylaw, the moderator may declare that the motion has been adopted by at least two-thirds of those voting. Once again, if it is not clear to me or if seven voters challenge the vote immediately after it is declared, we will have a count of hands by the tellers. And also, 50 voters may request a vote by secret ballot. In the last procedural point, I will read only the titles of articles printed in your advisory committee report and tightly summarize main motions when I repeat them. If at any time you would like to have the complete text of a motion restated, please ask. And finally, political debate can be intense, but tonight, in this place, we gather to promote the common good of all of Sherburne’s citizens and not just our own self-interest. I remind you to speak with respect and civility. Personal remarks or speculation about others’ motives are always out of order and I’ve been around long enough to know that repetition and escalating passion usually work against you. Tonight, we may agree and disagree, but tomorrow, we will still be friends and neighbors. So we’ll begin now with Article One. Article One is the Veterans Tax Abatement Program. I think your mic’s not on.
Is that a moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5N, which authorizes the Board of Selectmen to establish a program to reduce property tax liability for veterans in exchange for volunteer services and add further that the town vote to allow an approved representative for veterans physically unable to provide such services to the town and to allow maximum reduction of real property tax, of a real property tax bill to be based on 125 volunteer service hours given tax year.
It’s been moved and seconded. I understand there is a presentation that is going to be made.
Does it work? The town of Sherburne. I’m Paul Dorensis, 262 South Main Street, Sherburne, Massachusetts. Town of Sherburne has an opportunity tonight to give recognition to veterans by opting to participate in a state-sponsored program known as the Veterans Tax Abatement Work-Off In order to opt into this program, we have to accept a state statute. So that you’re informed of what you’re accepting, the text of this is on the slide in front of you. There are three excerpts that I wanted you all to see, so this is the second excerpt and then there’s one more. The thrust of this state program is that vets can volunteer to provide service to the town of Sherburne at minimum wage and receive a tax abatement on their real estate taxes. In addition to accepting the all-state program, there are two options under the program and we’re asking you to accept both of those. The first is if the vet is physically unable to do his volunteer service, that he can designate someone to do it for him. And the other is that it will be based on 125 volunteer hours in a given tax year rather than the cap of $1,000. The difference is that the minimum wage is going up, the state is increasing the minimum wage. This $1,000 is based on the current state minimum wage, which is $8 an hour, times 125 gets to $1,000. Why is the state presenting this program for veterans? Well, first and most importantly, is to give recognition to the sacrifices that veterans have made for all of us. There are a lot of hardships that our veterans face. Some of them are listed on this slide. Our national and our state leaders have sent a message out that veterans need more help. This program is part of a larger package of programs for veterans, but it is our community’s opportunity to participate and to show that we care. Next slide, please. The statute allows the Board of Selectmen to establish the details of the program and the Board of Selectmen has met and has established the details of the program. Next slide. No money is being sought by the Board of Selectmen with this article. Because it is a tax abatement program, it’s funded by abatements from the existing overlay surplus that the town already has appropriated for this year. The maximum financial exposure of this program to the town is $6,000. The program that we envision has the veterans agent, who will be speaking to you also in support of this article, selecting the veterans for the program. Each vet can provide service of up to 125 hours. Next slide. The vet can participate in both the senior tax credit program and the veterans tax program, but the veterans tax program has no age criteria, so that means that younger vets coming back from service in Iraq and Afghanistan and fighting Ebola in Africa can participate in this program. There’s a limit of one per household and the program is limited to no more than five veterans. That’s our best estimate as to how, how much will be needed for this program, but if more is needed, then we’ll be coming back looking for an expanded program.
Thank you, Paul. Been moved and seconded, is there any debate? Yes, Doug.
Doug Brody, 7 Curve Street. As a veteran services officer for the town, I wish to speak in favor of tonight’s Article One, the Veterans Tax Abatement Program. My job is to aid and advise our veterans and their spouses on all laws and regulations that are relevant to them as fellow residents who have honorably served their country. To do so, I act as liaison between state and federal agencies and those veterans who qualify for specific benefits and also oversee relevant programs and activities directed toward our veterans. The article you are to vote on tonight is to establish a veterans tax abatement program and is very much in concert with our recognition and appreciation of the contribution these veterans have made to the security of our country. It will provide an opportunity for those who qualify to be of service to our town government and to be remunerated for that service. Some statistics may be of interest to you. There are currently 157 Sherburne residents who have declared their veteran status, having served from World War II forward. Veterans therefore constitute approximately 4% of the total Sherburne population of just under 4,500. Although this program is not limited to senior veterans, it is interesting to note that under the senior tax program, there are currently nine residents working for the town with 15 working in the same capacity last fiscal year. Of the nine working this year, two are veterans. This program is a win-win situation. Among our veterans are certainly some who can benefit and the town as well can benefit from the work that they perform. I hope that you will cast your vote in favor of Article One. Thank you.
Is there any other comment? Yes, Mike.
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in favor of this article.
Any other comment? If not, we’ll proceed to the vote. This requires a simple majority for passage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article Two, to designate a custodian for Other Post-Employment Benefits, or OPEB, Trust Fund.
I move that the town designate a town treasurer to serve as a custodian for the town’s OPEB trust fund and that the town treasurer be authorized to execute and deliver an investment agreement with the State Retiree Benefits Trust Fund, decide checks and wire OPEB trust funds to the State Retiree Benefits Trust Fund or to the Pension Reserve Investment Trust, or as it may otherwise be directed by the State Retiree Benefits Trust Fund, to make withdrawals and investments and enter into such agreements and deliver such certificates and other documents as the State Retiree Benefits Trust Fund or the Pension Reserve Investment Management Board may direct.
Is there a second?
Second.
It’s been moved and seconded. I understand there will be a presentation on this as well.
David Williams, Town Administrator. This is supposed to be a financial housekeeping article. As you know, I’m the interim town treasurer and we’re trying to get the money that’s been appropriated by the town into a long-term investment that’s held by the state. So this is a future retiree health and life insurance costs or growing town liability that are known as Other Post-Employment Benefits, or OPEB. The town voted to set up an OPEB trust fund at the 2011 annual town meeting, appropriate funds at the 2014 annual town meeting, and now needs to authorize the placement of these funds. The town retirement funds are currently invested by the Pension Reserve Investment Management Board. You’ll recognize that as known as PRIM, and the State Retiree Benefits Trust Fund, which is a $60 billion asset. It made sense for us to place our long-term investments for the OPEB liability along with our retirement liability funds and we will continue to explore and compare all investment options. So basically, we’re looking for the authorization to authorize the treasurer to place these funds at this location with the state.
I feel like I should take a bow. Is there any debate on this motion? Comment, questions? Yes.
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to endorse this article.
Did everyone hear that? The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in favor of this article.
And Selectmen Dorensis abstained for conflict and interest reasons.
Two voted in favor. I stand corrected. If there’s no further comment, we’ll go to a vote. This requires a simple majority for passage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article Three, which would change the office of treasurer from elected to appointed.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the office of treasurer be made an appointed office, to be filled by appointment of the Board of Selectmen in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 1B, on acceptance by the voters at the annual town election, and that the Personnel Administration Plan, Amendment A, be amended to include the position of appointed treasurer as an exempt position under job classification.
Is there a second?
Second.
It’s been moved and seconded. Once again, I understand Town Administrator David Williams has a presentation.
David Williams, Town Administrator. This is about making the current, currently elected position of treasurer an appointed position. I just wanted to point out that getting to this point, I believe, has been a thoughtful public process and not rushed. Started back in 1985 with a Committee on the Structure of Town Government, they issued several concerns about Sherburne requires more professional management, the ability of the town to attract qualified volunteers for elected and appointed positions as a difficult task, an area of growing concern, and areas for further investigation include the number of elected versus appointed officials. A year later, the same committee reported a concern for a lack of professional and administrative staff coupled with a dwindling pool of volunteers. In November 2011, at the request of the Board of Selectmen, the University of Massachusetts at Boston Collins Center study came into town and they did this study and they noted, “The structure of town government is the way it is because it has evolved over the centuries as needs and demands have changed.” In the prior decade, only 11 seats were contested out of 190 seats. Positions of tax collector, treasurer, and town clerk went almost the entire decade with a single contested election. In 1985, Sherburne’s budget was less than $6 million, including schools, and is now over $25 million, and there’s been no resulting change in financial organization or structure. In May 2013, several structural changes were considered, but critics said the changes were too many, confusing, and too rushed. That was at the 2013 annual town meeting. A town governance task force was then formed to analyze the town’s structure. That was appointed by the elected moderator. As of September 2014 last month, the entities of Board of Selectmen, Advisory Committee, Town Governance Task Force, Save Our Sherburne, and myself, acting as the interim treasurer and the current town administrator, all believe that this is an opportune time to make the position, change the position from elected to appointed. This is a great graph I worked on and the arrow just simply shows that it moves from being an elected office down to being an appointed position. By statute, the appointed treasurer will still be obligated to fulfill the duties set forth in statute without influence. The treasurer will still need the Board of Selectmen involvement to approve the issuance of checks, approve the issuance of bonds, and appoint an assistant treasurer. Voting to have an appointed treasurer means hiring the most qualified person for the job, not the most popular, establishing minimum qualifications, complying with all parts of the Personnel Administration Plan like all other non-union positions, accountability to a financial administration hierarchy, and ratifying on the 2015 annual town election ballot. And those people that run for the office in the spring, if this passes tonight and is ratified in the spring, the results of that election would be invalidated and the position would be appointed. So that’s it.
Thank you. Are there any comments, question? Yes, Nancy.
Nancy Hess, 64 South Main Street. I knew that I could not cover all the important points in two minutes, so I put two pages of them on a handout and would ask that you be sure to read them before you vote. It’s this. I’m sorry to once again have to ask you to stand with me against the tide, but this is so important. We are still a work in progress, there is more to put in place, and then take time to test. It sounds like a simple harmless change, but it is not. This has enormous ramifications and so much potential for unintended consequences. It is a major shift of power to the selectmen. This is a piece of a grand plan, but there are different versions, none vetted or embraced by voters in a public forum. If you give your right to vote away, there will be no need to ask you your opinion. This is the cart before the horse. The Government Structure Committee is not done with its work, nor was it expected to be at this time. This article is premature and will complicate both budgeting for the annual town meeting and voting in the annual town election. If this article prevails tonight, it is required to have a ballot question at the annual town election after town meeting. That means everything will be in limbo at town meeting time. We will not know whether we are funding a new structure for an appointed treasurer or the traditional one for an elected treasurer, excuse me. We might discourage great potential candidates from running for election. If the ballot question fails, we would want to be sure we have elected a qualified person to serve. This change should not be done when we need to fill a vacancy. If the temporary appointment had been posted and candidates vetted, that would have given the selectmen the opportunity to test their appointing options. That ship has sailed, but you can set the course right for this one, tonight, by voting no on this article. We know we have at least one qualified, interested candidate. Let’s take the time to do this right. Please vote no and keep your right to vote.
Yes, the next speaker.
Hi, my name is George Morgan with 41 Berry Hill Road. I’ve been a resident of this town for going on 35 years now. I can’t recall any time in that period where an elected treasurer has either abused their position or failed to carry it out properly. This is a situation which seems to have worked for us. The town treasurer that we have just recently had has served on the way of the nation for many years and we have no reason to doubt it. The person who has, in effect, the train as assistant treasurer would not also be able to carry forward that same work successfully. A person elected has got to be known to more voters. That would be a person who is selected by a limited number of people. We certainly have shown ourselves the path to a We certainly have shown ourselves the path to a vote responsibly in these kinds of elections. We have, we believe, chosen well over the years, and there's no reason to believe at this point that we would not continue to choose well in the future. There does not seem to be any compelling reason at this point to change the arrangement from an elected position to an appointed position. And as Nancy has pointed out, there is a reason going on in the town at this point. That's still yet to be accomplished and where this might be a distraction. So I would personally be voting no on this and would encourage others to do likewise. Thank you.
Yes, next.
Jean Russell, 119 Nathan Road. Not here to talk about the merits of changing a treasurer's position from elected to appointed. I'm here to say there's no need to rush that change. The DOR and the Collins Report recommended not making changes, all at once. The charges voted last spring need to be implemented before making further changes in the structure of Sherburne's town government. Now is not the time to change the treasurer's position. It should remain elected. The DOR states Sherburne benefits from having well-qualified professionals in the treasurer tax collector's office. The Collins Report states structural change is not well-served by a simultaneous loss of institutional knowledge that the incumbents of these positions have. Peter Wood, our just-retired treasurer, has carefully prepared his assistant treasurer, who is a town resident, to take over the job as treasurer. She is well-qualified to do that and would like to. There is no need to make a change now. Please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Yes, next.
Neil McPherson, 3rd Art Road. I'm just here to make a few comments about this, and I think that if you look at this issue, this is an opportunity for the town to make change. I keep hearing people say, "Well, this has been fine. It's been hot. I've been doing this for years." But I think it's an opportunity to improve the way we do things. I want to be clear not speaking to anybody who might be forced into this position, always been in this position. But as I look at this, the experts, the Department of Revenue for the state, has suggested this is a good form. The Collins Institute, who provides consulting to communities like Sherburne, has said this is a good idea. So I certainly think it does make sense for us to move forward and move forward now. I also believe, I have heard that 70% of the towns in the county have similar structures. So clearly, there's present for this and has worked in many other communities. I also think it allows for greater flexibility in managing town resources and increases by the accountability. I know some of the concerns we come to begin to grow power for Board of Selectmen. I admit, personally, of all, in the hierarchy of the few candidates who were hired by Board of Selectmen are with their oversight, police chief and the fire chief. I can tell those processes were done in a fair fashion, and I think the end result was a very positive end result. So I think the time is now to make this change, to move forward for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, I actually think you jumped the line a little bit. I think Lucy was in front of you.
My name is Lucy Almation. I've been a resident of this town for 52 years. I'm a long-time clerk, and I disagree with a lot of the requirements that were put up there. You're making the assumption that no one in this town has the ability to perform the office of treasurer. We had one that was here, how many years, Peter? And he was amply qualified. I think the people in this town have enough intelligence to vote for a person, first of all, who's a resident, and secondly, who has the ability to perform that particular office. I think it's giving too much power to our Board of Selectmen, and I often wonder, what's next? What's the next office that they want to combine? You have to also understand, I assume it's going to be tax collector if and when she retires, there has to be a situation where there has to be things that have to be checked. The treasurer, everyone has something that has to be checked. And I don't believe our selectmen have that ability. Therefore, I say vote no.
Yes, Bob. I'm sorry, Bob. You're next.
Bob Delaney, Pleasantville, 46. I agree with most of the comments, not all of them that have been said, but when the town has, I believe, a neighborhood of $25 million budget, that's a lot of money, and we have been so fortunate to have been served by treasurer for so many years, who's both professional, qualified, and willing to do it. That is not always going to be the case, even if it's currently, his assistant is qualified. There's no reason why she couldn't qualify or apply for the job. The bottom line from my point of view is that there isn't always going to be somebody who's qualified. And if it's a popular person who's well-known, who looks and is bright, but is not familiar with financial running of a municipality, that could be costly, and I would strongly recommend that we vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Yes, Grace.
Oh, Grace Sherburne, 45 North Fifth Street. I think Bob just made my point, so I will just say that I have attended the task force meetings, many of them, not all, but many. They have looked very, very carefully at the two professional studies that were done. They were not done recently, but they were done two or three years ago, so we're not rushing. We are carefully, step by step, trying to institute changes which were recommended by two different professional groups that live in our town. And it is not a vote against any one individual, it is a vote for the best government that Sherburne can have. Any potential town resident or anyone from outside of town can vie for an appointed position. You get the best candidate that way. So I do support this. I support the task force that works so hard to bring these recommendations to the town. They thought carefully about it. They did their work. They explored many different communities, many different ways of doing things, and this is a very excellent concept which they are bringing to you tonight. I hope you will support it.
Can I have the gentleman in the back speak and then Paul? Okay.
Yeah, hi, Rick Lerner, living on Field Drive. I've been here 16 years. Most of the elections either have one person or three people, but you don't really know them too well. I don't know about their qualifications. I don't normally see little blurbs about it in the newspaper. Oh, what does this person do? What are their qualifications? So when it really comes down to it, I think most people in this town, they really don't know the qualifications of a lot, but not all, of these positions. Sometimes we get little things, I'm like the selectmen from the people, oh, this is what I believe in, blah, blah, blah. So I'm not really as involved to just vote for someone. The selectmen on the task force, these are people who know, and I trust them for the most part. So I would vote in favor of that. You know, there's an individual who apparently has some reasonable qualifications, that's four years, that's not 10 years, that's not 20 years. I don't know what else their background is. I don't know. You know, she may be the best person or may not even share who it is, but the individual before said, "Well, if they're good, they'll bring her in." And if they have some reservations, maybe they'll say no, maybe they'll interview a lot of people. But I really do believe that this position warrants the best candidate, being in the town, living in the town. All right, it has a little merit. Qualifications in my mind are much more important. The board, also in my mind, from what I can tell, would have a little bit more, they will have an oversight. Somehow, the DOR and the agency, this, they seem a little bit more separate. They're not going to be involved that much. I don't know the position, though. Plead my ignorance. But having the board overlook things a little more sounds a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, did you want to speak?
The Board of Selectmen has supported this article, and I want to give you the reasons why I personally support it and would ask you to vote yes on this. The first is that I work for a variety of towns in my professional capacity. 74% of the municipalities in Massachusetts have an appointed treasurer, and they are doing fine. Here, we have a $25 million budget. Where there has been, in the state, circumstances that money has gone missing, or there's a problem with accounting, or unreported deficits and all the rest, there can be the devil to pay for the municipality. I'm aware of one town who's discovered a $2.3 million deficit that they have to figure out a way to solve. A professional treasurer who's part of a financial team, the risk is much less. Second, third point would be that in finding people to serve, I spend a fair amount of time as a selectman trying to recruit people to serve on different boards, committees, and the like. And we have a lot of good people in town, but many of them have jobs. Many of them are working in other things. And this is a job that's a paying job in town for which you have to put in time. It's not something you do on weekends. You have to have the time. You have to have the ability to be there for the town. When you have an elected position, only, by law, only people who are registered voters of the town can run for the position.
Thank you, Paul.
Where you have appointed, you can have anybody inside the town or outside the town. So I urge you this.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, Mike.
Mike Chaimo, Mill Street, 32 Mill Street, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Just a couple of comments on this, because most of the points have been well-made already. Some of the comments have led people to believe that this is a referendum, either on a particular candidate or on a particular history of a person who's served in this office. Nothing really could be further from the truth. This is not a reaction to anything at all. This is a policy decision as to whether the town should be able to go into the pool of qualified and experienced and available treasurer candidates, or whether they should hope that someone qualified, not necessarily this year, next year, the year after, but at any point in the future steps forward who could do the job and serve the town well. And we have no guarantee that that's going to be the case, even if it might be the case right now, and it was the case for the past 20 years. I also want to point out that this article is subject to a ratification vote, which means that if a candidate who's qualified steps forward and people decide that they would rather have that candidate serve as an elected treasurer than have this selectman appoint a treasurer, they can make that decision at the ballot box in May. That can only happen if you approve this article now, and I would recommend that you approve the article now.
Are there any other people who wish to speak?
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. The Collins Report is, my understanding, its recommendations are pretty much the same for every community that it visits. It seems to have a singular textbook. I found when buying socks that one size doesn't fit all.
Yes, Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff Davis, 1 Leland. This makes me really, really uncomfortable. As it stands now, the treasurer is beholden to us. They have to answer to us, not the one guy who's responsible for making sure they get appointed. I'd like to keep it that way. I'd like you, and you, and you, and you, and you, and you, and you. I'd like you to be answered to, not you. Thank you.
Excuse me. Let me tell you why applauding is out of order. The basic principle of democracy is that everybody has their fair shot at convincing the voter, and in the end, the vote's taken, and the loser agrees that they had a fair shot, and they cast their lot with the winner, and everybody joins hands and moves on. To applaud is to kind of rub the, it's kind of like dancing in the end zone. It's kind of rubbing your face in it. So in parliamentary procedure, applause, generally speaking, is always out of order. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If not, we'll proceed. Okay, you're on the edge of your seat, Robert.
Well, is this the appropriate time to ask for a written ballot?
Yes, it would be the appropriate time.
Please.
Okay. It's been requested that we have a written ballot. It takes 50 people. If you would please just stand up, if you would like, we're not voting on the issue. Just stand up if you want to take a written ballot. I think that's 50. So we will be using, everybody should have received a sort of periwinkle blue ballot. This is going to be ballot number one, and you're going to tear off either yes or no. Please do not fold it over, leave it open so it will be easier to count. And while we are passing around the containers and counting the votes, we would ask that you please stay in your seats. It is difficult to get the ballots collected and counted when people are meandering around. Yes?
What does a yes vote mean and what does a no vote mean?
The motion was to make the office of treasurer an appointed office. If you are in favor of an appointed treasurer, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to an appointed treasurer, you will vote no. Everybody understand that?
Correct. You have to say subject to ratification by the voters.
Okay. Okay. It is, Mike Chaimo has just made the clarifying point that it would be subject to ratification by the voters at the polls in May. This gets it, that to vote yes now, well, would get it to the election in May. Mic's on? Yes. The motion was to make the office of treasurer appointed, to begin the process for that. And the yes votes were 81. The no votes were 86. Article four. A proposed zoning bylaw change concerning outside entertainment.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Rubin?
I hope that no action be taken.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I understand that the Planning Board wishes to withdraw this article.
So the Planning Board wishes to withdraw. Yes, did you want to speak, John?
The Planning Board does not have a, is going to, John Higley, 14th Central Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board doesn't have a report, and so the article is withdrawn. The reason is that we felt there just wasn't enough time for the deliberation and discussion. Because the posting time for a public hearing is required, for a Planning Board hearing is required by zoning, for a zoning bylaw change, our hearing was last night. So there really wasn't time for proper discussion and deliberation. So the article is withdrawn. It's, nothing negative about it. It was intentionally drafted to be very general. In Washington, there wasn't much time for discussion and a hearing, so intentionally made very general. We had a discussion with We had a discussion with the Chairman of the Zoning Board and agreed that it would be, we'd go through a normal scheduling time and get our Planning Board hearing before Advisory's hearing instead of that, and have that, go through that process for the spring annual town meeting.
Okay, thank you. So there has been a motion to take no action. Approval of this motion is a simple majority. Excuse me, yes. Elliot?
I would recommend...
Elliot, would you identify?
Elliot Taylor, 30 North Main Street, 100 feet from the Sherwin Inn. I would recommend that no action be taken on this and in future meetings. Over 25 years ago, town meeting voted not to rezone the property so that the Sherwin Inn could be built. The next year, it was again voted no on the first night. However, on the second night, the proposal was reconsidered and voted yes. Many people voted no the first night, did not show up the second night. The Sherwin Inn gang packed the second meeting, and it was voted yes. That shows what kind of neighbors I have. It also voted that there would be no outdoor entertainment, and that there would be 130-seat maximum at the inn to avoid large crowds. This has worked well over the past 25 years. And three years ago, the Sherwin Business Association decided they wanted to have a beer bash over there, and have over 200 people and outdoor entertainment. Over Elliot Taylor, me, objections. I told them that if you let this happen, there would be large outdoor parties there every night. How can you say no to the next group that comes in? Once you say yes to this group, and you overturn this vote that was taken 25 years ago to let everyone know that the Sherwin Inn would just be a nice little quiet neighborhood restaurant, and no one should complain? Well, I have complained many times. I live 100 feet from the Sherwin Inn.
Thank you, Elliot. Could you wrap it up?
I just hope that we do not allow this ever to happen, outdoor entertainment at the Sherwin Inn.
Thank you, Elliot. Are there any other comments? If not, we'll go to the vote. As I said, this requires a simple majority to take no action. All those in favor of taking no action, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Article five, the acceptance of the changing Board of Selectmen from three to five members.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Rubin?
I move that an act passed by the General Court in Chapter 298 of the Acts of 2014 entitled, quote, "An Act Increasing the Number of Selectmen in the Town of Sherwin," be accepted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment, discussion, debate? Yes?
Madam Moderator? Chuck Young, 116 Maple Street. I'm a member of the Sherwin Governance Task Force Committee that was created at the 2013 town meeting, legally chaired by Kitty Sturgis. We, our charter was to review the UMass Boston Collins Institute's recommendations and the Mass DOR recommendations, one of which included considering expanding the size of the Board of Selectmen from three members to five members. At the 2014 regularly scheduled annual town meeting, that warrant recommendation by the task force was approved overwhelmingly. The bill was passed by the legislature and signed by Governor Patrick in August. The advisory committee has voted unanimously both for the last annual town meeting and for this annual town meeting to approve it. The primary rationale for increasing the size of the Board of Selectmen is to have broader and wider representation. The current Board of Three Members has the heaviest workload of any of the voluntary boards in town. Having a five-member board is going to make it much easier to have different viewpoints represented, and it will be much, much easier to schedule meetings and to achieve a forum. An increasing number of towns have moved to five-member boards, particularly in eastern half of the state. Towns of Southborough, Harvard, Sudbury, and Newbury have recently made that move. And at this point, almost two-thirds of all the towns in eastern Massachusetts have five-member boards. Some of the concerns is with five members, it's going to be longer meetings, it's going to be a longer discussion, that will take more time. That's good and bad. There are some issues that require a lot more deliberation. The other concern is finding candidates to run, and I've been pleased that we've been approached by a number of people who have indicated that they are interested in serving on a larger board where the workload is shared. A large number of town committees, most of them in town, are already five to nine-member boards. These are committees that have a history of working well together and working well with other town boards. At prior meetings, a number of people who've served on these boards have said exactly that. Next slide, neighboring towns, in about a three-to-one ratio, most of them have five-member boards. There are three-member boards, and that has been a historical trend. Back in 1776, Sherwin had a much, much larger Board of Selectmen, but historically, the move's been to broader boards. And the final slide is, a number of people have questioned whether or not this only applies to larger towns. These are a listing of about 20 towns in eastern Mass, five-member boards, and less than 10,000 residents. And as I mentioned earlier, currently, about two-thirds of all towns in the eastern half of the state have five-member boards. So the Governance Task Force Committee recommends that this town meeting, like the 2014 town meeting, approve the warrant to increase the size of the board from three members to five members.
Yes, in the rear, Frank?
Frank Hess, 64 South Main Street, and a member of the five-person Sherwin School Committee. I support the change from three to five selectmen in Sherwin. The Sherwin School Committee, like the Board of Selectmen, finds they have to address a wide range of issues and connect and cooperate with many boards and groups in town. Without the ability to have two members lead subcommittees, or to have individual members be appointed as liaison to other groups, much as advisory does, and report back to a larger group, we would find it difficult to fulfill our mission. We have had two members work on negotiations, capital needs at Pine Hill, the new foreign language curriculum, often in conjunction with Dover, the region, and other interested citizens. We have members as liaison to the Community School Association, the Special Needs Advisory Council, our system-wide policy committee, technology committee, our multi-town special needs collaborative, and the Town Center of Water and Sewer Study Committee. This is just a partial list of the roles that the five members of the Sherwin School Committee specialize in, and then report back to the larger committee. There would be overload if three people had to fill all the tasks that we've assigned to ourselves. Five members contribute a more diverse perspective and a broader representation of the community. I cannot imagine the same need to accomplish tasks and meet the goals the selectmen set for themselves would not be more easily achieved with a larger group to share the tasks. Thank you.
Yes, in the rear.
George Morgan, 41 Bear Hill Road. Again, in my 35 years here in this town, I've not really seen any failure of the three-person selectmen board to properly do their job. This article seems to be generated initially by a group study and supported by a assistant petition, but it doesn't seem to have been occasioned by any demonstrated failure of the three-person board to actually do the town's business. The towns of Bunnigan Sherwin, with similar populations, do disfind the three people on their boards. Most of the towns on that list there are somewhat remote from Sherwin. The present system certainly doesn't show signs of falling apart, breaking, and does not seem to be a situation that needs to be fixed. In this respect, the rationale for going to a five-person board appears not to be occasioned by any failure of the present system to work, but rather, it appears to be a potential opportunity to more readily advance partisan interests. If I were to vote yes on this, I would need to have seen some failure on the part of the existing system, which I in 35 years have not seen. So I would encourage all here to vote no on this particular article. I think it would also be appropriate, at this point, where this does definitely have a very strong bearing on how the town operates, to have a vote taken by paper ballot. Thank you.
Elliot, actually, there was someone waiting, and then you'll be next after that? Yes?
John Hinkley, 14 Saddle Brook Road. I serve on several boards that have five members or more on the Planning Board here in Sherwin, and have found that the larger number makes it easier to recruit people to the board with the idea of, this has already been mentioned, the diversity, spreading out the workload. And also, it allows board members to attend other groups and interests in the other boards. The Planning Board really benefits when the selectmen, who I think do a heroic amount of work, come to our meeting, and we really benefit from that. I think just a larger board would enable that to happen more often. So I'm in favor of this, moving to five-member board.
Yes, Elliot?
Elliot Taylor, 30 North Main Street. Over the past 50 years, I think I've attended more selectmen's meetings than the selectmen have. But that aside, I would like to know what the selectmen feel about this. If they are satisfied with the way it is with the three-man board, then I think we should stick with it. If they recommend we go to five, then let's do what they want. Thank you.
Hello? Oh, okay. I'll direct that question to Mike Chaimo. Mike's going to answer the question that Elliot asked. My mic seems to be sort of cutting in and out.
The Board of Selectmen did not take a position this time on this article. We had one member who was opposed to it, one member who was in favor of it, and one member who did not take a position on this. So I think the answer to your question is that the Board of Selectmen can see, at least two of the members can see merits in this and some advantages to it, and at least two of the members can also see potential problems.
Jeff?
Jeff Davis again, 1 Leland. We already voted on this, didn't we? And, I mean, we already voted on it, it's gone upstate, it's signed, it came back, let's just turn the spit on this thing and get it done.
Okay. Yes, we have another speaker.
Peter Luthen, Dopping Brook Road. I serve on a three-member board health, and I, as I said at the last town meeting, I am loving it for a five-member board, but only voting for the selectmen, and I think the improvements would be that.
If there are no other... Yes, Robert?
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. This time, the Collins Report got it right.
Thank you, Robert. There has already been a request to take a secret ballot. Remember, I'm not asking you to vote. I'm just asking you, if you're in favor of a secret ballot, please stand. I need 50 people. 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, 11, 13, 15, 17, 18, 20, 22, 24, 30, 32, 34, 37, 38, 40, 42, 44, 46, 48, 49... Ooh! My imperfect count is 53, so good enough for me. So now, we are going to be voting on acceptance of the prior vote and the act of the state legislature of changing the Board of Selectmen from three to five. We will be voting on ballot two. Once again, please remain in your seat. Please tear off your yes or your no, and don't fold it. Could everyone please come to order? Thank you. The vote was yes, 147; no, 16. The motion passes. That actually completes tonight's business. I would be happy to accept a motion to dissolve.
Dissolve.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay.